After those who have been at the meeting in accordance with the Open Public Mean Act pursuant to public law 1975, said notice is advertised-
One second, excuse me. Is this working?
Yes, it is working. It does- yes, it just shows differently now.
Alright, okay.
Said notice is advertised in the Asbury Park Press and the Beacon was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and place of the meeting. Everyone lies for the question.
The United States of America and two republics for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Resolution-
No, proclamation.
Oh, we did a proclamation.
You're right, I'm sorry.
Resolution 2022-2022 authorizing a promotion in the Police Department.
Resolution to Towneville County, Washington, New Jersey promoting John McKee and Robert Flynn to the position of Police Lieutenant for the Lacy Towneville Police Department. Have a motion?
Move it.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
This is Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Donald?
Yes.
And Mayor Dykoff, how do you vote on that resolution?
Yes.
Thank you. The swearing-in of these two gentlemen will be done at the August 11th meeting.
Okay.
Now, your proclamation, I'm sorry.
This is proclamation for the Girl Scouts Bronze Award. This is the third highest award possible achievement in Girl Scouts.
Yeah, just ask him to mute himself.
You're making a lot of noise.
If he muted himself, it would be better. He should be able to control his mute on his own.
Yeah, he can control his mute.
It's the third, it's the highest badge achievement possible in the Girl Scouts. Okay, come on down, not a problem.
Come on down.
Have her sit down in front. Alright, so it's the third highest award possible, and what they did to get this, now there's six girls, five girls, they did a hundred and- for the 150th anniversary, they did a video. They went out and interviewed people, put this all together. One second.
There we go.
Okay. They had to work through COVID, so they did an outstanding job, and we have a proclamation for them. Let me read this. Whereas Juliette Gordon Daisy Love organized the first Girl Scout troop over 100 years ago on March 12th, 1912, in Savannah, Georgia, whereas today the Girl Scouts are over 2.7 million strong, with over 1.9 million girls and 800,000 volunteers, and whereas the Girl Scout mission is to build one's character, courage, confidence, and to make the world a better place, and whereas introduced in 2001 by the Girl Scouts, the United States of America, the Bronze Award is the third highest award in Girl Scouts of the USA, and can only be earned by Girl Scouts at the junior level. Whereas earning the Girl Scout Bronze Award involves the time it takes to complete a Girl Scout journey, junior journey, and a minimum of 20 hours to build the team, explore the community, and choose and plan their project, and put the plan in motion, whereas in the order of the Girl Scout troop 50249 to earn this award, Alina Azar, Riel Botin, Victor King, there we go, Regan Sanguey, close, Sophie Sterling, Nisa Voorhees created a Lacy 150 movie celebrating Lacy 150th anniversary, and whereas the team told the story of Lacy as told by our mayor, government officials, local historians, Lacy business owners, our teachers, as well as our residents, and whereas the mayor and the township committee wish to commend and congratulate, good to go, Alina Azar, Riel, Botin, Victor, Victoria King, Regan Sanguey, Sophie Sterling, and Nisa Voorhees on receiving this high honor, whereas the mayor and the township committee would like this accomplishment and the dedication of these young individuals to be an example for all those who involved in scouting, and thank you for the project. Now, therefore, I, Deputy Mayor Tim McDonald of Lacy Township, on behalf of the mayor, Mark Dykoff of Lacy Township, and the township committee honor Alina Azar, Riel Botin, Victor, Victoria King, Regan Sanguey, Sophie Sterling, and Nisa Voorhees for the outstanding compliment and encourage others to follow their example. We have proclamations for all the girls, so we're not up. We have them in the middle.
No, they're not.
They're not in.
No, see, just hand them out.
I'll come down.
Girls, why don't you come up here so we can hand them to you and we get some pictures?
Alright, and then we're gonna ask you questions.
They might know more about this. Come on up here and face out that way, face that way, see your moms and dads who see them.
Yeah, there you go, congratulations. Your name is?
Victoria King.
Victoria, there you go. Your name is?
Rebecca Sander.
Rebecca Sander. Your name is? Sophie, there you go. And your name is? What? Do we have an extra one here?
She, uh, she's not making it.
She could not make it. You can look in the video.
Sure.
Alright, okay. Alright, so I'll stand here and get some pictures. Alright, alright, have a seat. We're gonna ask you some questions. Alright. So tell us, who put this whole project together? Who was the leader of this project? Mom?
They're not talking.
I wasn't alone. I had a co-leader, Thursday King, who really kind of headed this whole thing. And because of COVID, we had lost a lot of time, so we were lucky enough to have this pitch to us. And we gave it all some time because it was a very huge project for them, you know, being juniors, you know, for a time, so. Um, and they all said, yes, let's do it, and it was really awesome. They did a lot, and in places we had our challenges through it, and we got to interview, uh, uh-
Keep it to itself.
Yeah, sorry.
It's all good.
I'm nervous. And like 40-something other people from the town, and it was really amazing, I think, I think it's been for all of us. In truth, we learned a lot about not just this town, but people in it. It is a great-
And how many hours altogether in this whole project? Get ballparked.
Probably over a hundred.
Wow.
Yeah, it was, they did everything from coming up with the questions to ask, to emailing the mayor at the time, and back and forth, and doing the online polls. Of course, they couldn't post it because they're underage, so they would come up with what? Two posts, and we would put it together and post it. They came up with like the interview questions, they called other interviewees to set up things. They, yeah, everything, research, the people who they were actually interviewing, they rented cameras, they learned how to mic somebody up, they learned how to edit, everything, yeah.
There you go.
They-
Hold interview everybody.
Yeah.
So what was the most interesting thing you found out? Did you find anything interesting out?
I think that would be up to the girls.
Yeah.
Girls, what did you find?
What was the most interesting? It's diarist for now.
No, don't they, you didn't find anything, anything about our town?
Well, respect, like, maybe like respecting all the people who, um, be interviewed because they were very knowledgeable.
No, good answer.
Oh, that's a good answer. You're respecting other people. That's fantastic. How old, let me ask you, how old were you, girls? So how long did they do it?
They all started when they were in fifth and sixth grade.
Okay.
Fifth grade, and they finished it up in sixth grade, because again, because of COVID, everything was pushed, so they weren't allowed to actually officially be recognized, and so it was only the first year first. So that's when they finally officially earned their Bronze Award, but obviously the movie was completed sometime.
So will these girls who wanted to get that highest award, I'd say?
So, yeah, we've actually spoken to them, and they all pretty much want to go for that Silver Award, so they already have ideas, and we've already taken at least the first two or three steps towards that, so.
Tell the young lady to come here. Tell her to come up here. Come on up here.
Come on up here.
No, come this way.
Go on up there. So-
I think John Parker probably one of our favorite, at least my favorite interview, and he was very, he was knowledgeable, but he was also just very real. It was a great interview. I mean, everybody felt it was a great interview. Same thing with Eleanor, and it was really interesting, at least for me, to hear from the older generation about how it used to be, because, you know, we only work in his now.
Right.
And it was, you know, even though it was about life in the city today, it was nice to hear and see that a little bit of the past.
Ma'am, would you mind if I spoke for a second?
No, go ahead.
I just wanted to say, I'm a former Girl Scout and a former Girl Scout leader with a daughter who made it all the way here too, and I'm very proud, and it's really nice to see the girls for a change, because we got a lot of Boy Scouts in. It's nice to see the young ladies here today, and thank you for representing. And to all the parents too, because it's important. You put a lot of time into it.
Yeah, we were in the bracket. I learned how to use Google.
So when they get the Gold Award, they will be back.
We want to see it.
We will absolutely see that.
The next one will Silver.
Alright, we'll take them back.
We'll take them back to Silver, we'll take them back for the Gold. Okay, girl? Enjoy your summer, girls. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can we take one more picture just with each other?
Of course.
Sure.
Yes, get the whole picture, right? Yes, thank you.
No, no, we're not going to. Never get wrong, your interviews are official. You know, when we started this, they were shorter than I was. Nice ladies. I may all let each other do it.
That's a good thing.
I agree with Cortolo wants to say something.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Hey, girls, we're really proud of you. I mean, not only because we're girls and we do love our boys, and we've seen boys up here many times, and there was a young lady years ago in a gold award up here named Erin who did great, great work. I don't know if you knew her or not.
She's a senior in college this year. Can you imagine that?
She was young like you. All, I almost said guys, that wouldn't have been right. Like you girls, so, so proud of our girls, and the fact that, you know, you were able to interview Ms. Dittman and former Mayor Parker to find out about our history. You know, our history's important. You've got to tell that story, because it gets forgotten if you don't tell it. So you're the generation coming up. So thank you so much. We're really, really proud of our girls in this town, not just our boys. We're proud of our girls too. Thanks so much to you and the parents.
Thank you.
Okay.
Steve, you want to say anything?
Do you girls want to say anything? Let's open it up to the girls who did the work.
Anything?
Anything at all? We don't bite.
Nope.
Nope, okay. Alright, thanks.
She had her hand up. You had your hand up, didn't you?
Yeah, what did you want to say?
What'd you want to say?
I need you to speak up a little bit. Can you speak up a little louder?
I was about to say, like, uh, like we learned how to edit, like different kind of scripts and everything, and we also learned how to interview people, and how to interview people that we haven't met before.
That's fantastic.
That's great. So you think this is, all the editing, all this type of work interviewing, you think this is, anybody you might want to follow into this type of a field when you get, when you get older and become a pro- a location for you? Like a new, no, no, she's saying it.
It was fun, but I don't think I'm gonna do this for a living.
That's true.
Alright, thank you very much.
Great job, girls.
Have a great summer. You motion to adjourn this part, just me, the movement, the coffee?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
You get a chance to check out the movement.
Yes, yes, you will.
Was there a movie with some on the beach? 150 miles, no?
I've seen, I've seen.
Yeah, I think it was the 150 mile on the beach.
Okay. You ready to roll here? Okay. Alright, here we go. Article notice for this meeting, this meeting is beginning in accordance with the Open Public Mean Act pursuant to public law 1975, said notice is advertised in the Asbury Park Press and the Beacon was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and place of the meeting. Will salute the flag and take a moment to sign us.
The United States of America and two republics for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First reading of ordinance 2022-24 authorizing the purchase of block 1853 lot 16 and 17.
North of Towneville County, Washington, New Jersey, authorizing the purchase of block 1853 lot 16 and 17 on Calvin Street pursuant to NJSA 48:12-5. This is a 4,500 parcel in the area in need of redevelopment for the Phase 3 of the Lacy family apartments. We are purchasing it from the current property owner for the amount of $40,000. Motion?
Second.
This is Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
And Deputy Mayor McDonald?
Yes. First reading of ordinance 2022-25 amending chapter 335, so it's amend the section related to the electric vehicle charging.
In order to Towneville County, Washington, New Jersey, amending and supplementing Article 3 of Chapter 335 entitled General Regulations to Authorize and Encourage Electric Vehicle Supply Service Equipment at Make Ready Parking Spaces, so as to amend section 335.223-3E1 Minimum Parking Requirements in Section 335.22-3F6 Usage Fees. There, I have to reflect in the minimum parking requirements, the chapter that reflects our parking requirements for Lacy Towneville, which is Chapter 285 of the Lacy Municipal Code, and as to the usage fees, which you can adopt and place usage fees for people to come and charge in the electric vehicles for the municipal own sites, we're gonna set a fee at the time by resolution, so you don't have to keep adopting an ordinance each time you need to change the fees. So those are the two amendments in that ordinance.
I knew it was coming.
Motion?
Move it.
Hi, ma'am.
We're gonna, yeah, we need to take a five-minute recess in, or for something. I can't, I can be early, I'm sitting here.
Let's get through this, go down and take a five-minute recess.
Moving.
He has to mute.
Okay. Pete, did you make a motion on this?
I did, sir.
Well, have a second.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
This is Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
And Deputy Mayor McDonald?
Yes, let's take a five-minute recess to get that-
Well, we're gonna need to do a five-minute.
Okay.
We have to do something with his phone, because-
If you want to call, tell him, or-
I just told him, he did mute it. Okay, now young-
We had to be in a quiet, secure place when we had all that.
Okay, second, number three, second reading of ordinance 2022-21 adopting amendments to the redevelopment plan. Hold on, hold on a second.
What is the problem?
We love the case.
It's on the beach, and we're here.
You guys should have control over that field.
Yes, but he needs to vote, so I'd have to go jump out of my seat.
Let's take a step down.
How about you?
This is not a formal meeting. Where we should go, we're into, you have a pool, we could go there and all. Maybe we can all go to the bar and hang out.
Alright.
So she's, Amy's gonna mute him and unmute him.
Okay, second reading of ordinance 2022-21 adopting amendments to the redevelopment plan.
In order to Towneville County, Washington, New Jersey, adopting certain amendments to the redevelopment plan as adopted by ordinance 201904 and any subsequent ordinances thereto. This is in order to include block 1853 and block 1852 in the redevelopment plan for the third phase of the Lacy family apartments, whereas 70 additional units will be built in accordance with our fair share of settlement with the Council on Affordable Housing. Second reading, we open the floor to public comments. Any comments?
Come on down.
Kevin Plan, 232 Davis Avenue. What exactly are we amending?
Because those two blocking lots were not in the redev- the original redevelopment plan from 2019. So we're including block 1852 and 1853, and the parcel next to Ocean First Bank. So it's the parcel next to Ocean First Bank, and those two sets of blocks behind, I guess, I'll say JT's Bagels. They were not in the original plan, and now we're including them in the plan, so we can meet our obligation for our current fair share of housing until they recapitulate in 2025 and tell us how many more.
Okay, because I looked at the plans, and there's some concerns, because there's one way in and one way out, and the roads are awful narrow, and you're gonna get some comments from the fire chief about that. And in any way, is by what you're doing gonna hamper his input to what's being done there, because there's issues.
That stuff will be heard before the planning board.
But by you changing your, amending your ordinances, is that gonna affect anything, his input?
We're just including in the redevelopment plan. I still have to submit a plan and get heard by the planning board. As a matter of fact, it's a special meeting on August 8th.
Don't worry, I'll be there. Four, I'm sorry, four.
First week of August.
I'll listen, I'll be there.
Okay. Anybody else?
Seeing none, motion to close the floor?
Move it.
Now, motion on the ordinance, sorry, yes.
Motion on this ordinance?
Move it.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
This is Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Thank you. And Deputy Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Okay, second, second reading of ordinance 2022-222 adopting the financial agreement for the cornerstone at Lacy Phase 3.
In order to Towneville County, Washington, New Jersey, adopting the financial agreement under NJSA 48:20-1 at SEC and authorizing the tax exemption and payment in lieu of taxes in connection with the cornerstone at Lacy Phase 3 project. Yeah, this is a part and parcel of the application that goes before the New Jersey Housing Mortgage and Finance Agency with regards to the 70-unit structure that will be built, and it is low income, just so you know that. It has to be, the tenants' incomes are at least below 60% of the area's median income qualified to live in those residences there. And this is all part of the process with the state for the funding. So, anybody comment?
Second reading opens up to the floor.
Some people don't know what's going on. So, you purchased the property, correct? Now you're giving it to the developer, correct?
The Towneville County has a financial obligation to do part of their own COA. So we have an obligation either to donate property to them or purchase the property to donate them, just like we did with the nursing home site.
Okay, then they build the project. Now, you're telling me they're not paying taxes on it. How long is that?
That it's based on New Jersey's Housing Mortgage and Finance Law. It's a 30-year mortgage, just like with your house, and they pay a prorated portion of taxes based on rental income and receiving.
And is this developer getting any grant money to build this project?
No grant money. He's getting money from New Jersey Mortgage and Finance Agency.
Pretty sweet deal if you're the developer, getting a property for nothing, pretty much building the project for nothing, gonna sit back-
No, it has to be paid back. They have a mortgage that they're paying back.
But he's-
No, you're 100% right. I don't think anybody, I'm not gonna speak for everybody, but I think I'm not. So I don't think any-
I'm correct.
You're mostly-
Pretty close, pretty close.
So-
Oh my God.
None of us, myself, I pay a lot in COA fees. I'm a developer in town, and I do pay a lot of COA fees. I've, the process is incredibly unfair to residents of Lacy and developers like myself. We're forced to pay into it. And then another developer then comes along and takes Lacy's money, or Lacy has to put up the land and essentially builds a free project, you know, a free project. Separate, they do need, there is a need for some type of housing. It's probably not the way I would do it. You know, a lot of this, the housing that they, that, the cheaper housing in New Jersey is, you know, in dire need of repair, even the stuff in Lacy that's sort of, you know, below market value, I guess, needs a lot of repair. So these are, this is new housing, and there are people in Lacy Township that, you know, should have the benefit of, you know, updated utilities and, you know, but at the same time, it is a sweet deal for developers. But there's nothing, we can, we can vote no. If we were to vote no, then we can really get it rammed down our throat.
But it's, it's a super sweet deal for a developer.
This is, we, we, so our COA obligation, our original COA obligation, this stuff goes on for years. Our original COA obligation was something like 1,200 units. We've successfully negotiated that down with the state of New Jersey, went to court, and we, I think we were, it was 180 units or something, so 120 of those units have already been built, and this is the balance of that. So, so we negotiated down from 1,200 units to approximately 180 units, you know. I'm still not happy giving property to a developer, but it's still better than having, having it rammed down your throat. So the alternative is if we do not provide COA housing, then a developer could come in anywhere on any piece of property in town-
Gilmore, for example.
And build without much oversight from the planning board. So that's why they're, that's why they're building there, that's why we have to give, you know, we have to give them the land. It's a better deal in the long run for the township.
Well, you explained that to everybody. Thank you.
Mr. Bender?
Barry Bender, Stark May Avenue. Just something that I've noticed, and maybe you guys could enlighten me on this. When I drive up and down Route 9, and I see these developments, I see the same developer's name on all of them. Is there any special reason? Do they have any kind of special in? How do, how do the process, how does the developer, do you know?
Uh, yeah, they had a, they have a good, you know, some of the partners in that, in that group, you know, they're attorneys. This is what they do. They find where the financing is in New Jersey, that, you know, they pass the fina- they pass these rules in Trenton. You know, actually Senator Connors might be able to-
Now, I voted now.
So they, so, so they, so they work, they work the system, they have the time, and, you know, the legal expertise and the resources to comb the bills of Trenton, to see what was, you know, see where the, how the financing works, and then they're able to, I don't say exploit, I mean, it passed through, you know, they're, they're able to, you know, get money from the state of New Jersey to build housing.
Yeah, it would, it would be, just to my point, it would be interesting to see different names on these developments.
Yeah, it's typical. Once they know the system, though, they could keep working it, you know, once you know the process of the red tape will-
Which, which isn't right either, but, yeah.
It's not, I mean, it is what it is.
Yeah.
We have, and we have to deal with.
Someday we could change it, maybe.
Yeah, maybe. Good luck with that, though. Anybody else? Anybody else?
Seeing none, motion to close the floor?
Move it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion on the ordinance, please?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
This is Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
And Deputy Mayor McDonald?
Yes.
Second reading of ordinance 2022-23 amending chapter 335 zoning as to correct the typographical error.
In order to Towneville County, Washington, New Jersey, amending and supplementing chapter 335 of the Towneville Code of the Towneville County Zoning, so as to amend section 33561B dot 3A. Back in 2012, the master plan land use element was updated for zoning for non-age-restricted multifamily residential developments, which predicates then ordinances to be adopted by the governing body. If there was an ordinance adopted in 2013 by the governing body with a said minimum areas, additional multifamily requirements with area size requirements, the word maximum was put in there when it should have been minimum. It was clearly in the master plan. We have been utilizing the master plan as the document that we've been approving developments off of, and that is what the ruling is, and it's also part of our fair share health settlement with fair share housing as to the word minimum versus maximum there for five acre tracts in the C200 zone. Second reading?
Secondly, open this up to the public, to the public committee of comment, Regina?
Regina descends of Sunset Drive Sunrise Beach. I totally object to the way this is worded as a typographical error. I was present in 2012 when the master plan was redone. That clause was designed to minimize development per acre, not maximize, okay? So the change is not a typo by any stretch of the imagination. A typo is when you misspell a word. This is changing a word, and changing something that has to be legally done by the municipal land use law. I do not believe it's being followed correctly. This is a developer's dream to place tons of high-density housing or high-rise residential structures all over the town. This change gives- This change gives developers a license to kill this town, as far as I'm concerned. And more public review is needed because this is gonna affect quality of life in this town severely. I do not believe this is a typographical error. So what is the ultimate goal here? Are we trying to raise taxes or line people's pockets? By doing this attempt at rezoning, this is not following land use law. And this is the way the township is wide open to a lawsuit. Mr. Connors, would you like to comment on how the municipal land use law works?
It is in accordance with the land use law.
You think this is a typo, for real?
I'm not saying whether it's a typo or not, it makes no difference whether it's a typo, characterizes it as a typo or not. The governing body has decided to change the zoning ordinance to put the provision in that it would be a minimum of five acres, this is not a maximum.
There's a right way and a wrong way to change the master plan and I believe this is the wrong way.
It's in accordance with the procedures of land use.
I'm glad you think so, thank you.
Anybody else? The lady in the black.
I just wanna say thank you.
No, no, you need to come down here.
Oh, I was there, I heard the discussion. I'm not deaf and I don't have dementia.
Hi, Courtney Summers and I live on Camelot Port in Little Harbor. So I 1,000% agree with everything that she has said. We have a lot of members of the community that are very upset about the amount of development that Lacy Township is doing right now. I grew up in Toms River and one of the reasons why I moved here and started a family was because it wasn't Toms River. You know, we wanna talk about the technicalities of a typo or whatnot, regardless of a typo or whatever, changing this ordinance with one word changes everything, changes so much. And it's not just this one development because now that'll affect the next contractor or developer that comes in for the next massive project that they wanna do. As a mom, I'm concerned about my son, his classroom size. As a professional, I'm concerned about safety in the community and the amount of people that this is going to affect, the traffic, everything. This changing of the ordinance is going to affect so many things in our town, infrastructure, resources, everything, that if this tiny little change is made, it scares me for what you're opening a door for. And also I just wanna say, I don't really understand a lot of this, this is not my wheelhouse, right? I don't, I'm gonna be honest, it's not.
It's difficult to understand, I guess.
It is very difficult to follow and understand. And I, I feel as a resident that, you know, there was an alleged meeting that I, you know, you don't even know about. You know, as a, in the proximity where I live, we were noticed obviously about this development, but not about this ordinance. So I found out about this second hearing, I feel like a little too late in the game. But it is something that like, I just, I, I, you guys probably already have your mind made up and that's what sucks. But just as a resident, as, as a human being, you know, what we love about Lacy, like, I didn't even know about all these other developments going on. That is like, it's blowing my mind right now, this is, this is not what I wanted, you know what I mean, it's not where I wanted.
Certainly understand that, let me, let me just, Veronica just had it, this is from October of 2012. We don't have a date on it, this is the Lacy Township Master Plan Reexamination. So after we do the master plan, they go through looking for mistakes, it's a big document and their mistakes are gonna be made, it's gonna be made. And this is, what page is this? 16?
63.
16 or 63, so even the reexamination is a big document. And it says, areas of size requirement, this is what, this was done by Gravat Consulting. The minimum, it says, number one, minimum tract size shall be five acres. So this is, it, we call it a typo, it's a misprint, whatever, we didn't get it in, when we did the master plan back then, we didn't get it in right.
No, no, the master plan was done right, it was the ordinance that we adopted that got into the COA.
So that's, that's what, that's what got screwed up. So had we picked this up six months after this had happened, no, no big deal. But we didn't pick it up until 10 years later. So now we have to follow the proper procedures by law to do it this way. We've been backing this around for about a year and a half. So that's where we are.
Can I, this is in my wheelhouse, can I ask to understand further, like, if the proper way or legal way is to have this word change? Like, what does that ultimately, because, so I'm gonna talk hypotheticals here so I can try to understand it. So if you have a, say, five acres of land, let's, 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 let's give numbers, 10 acres of land, okay? Say 10 acres of land and on that 10 acres you're allowed, I don't know, 10 units.
Okay.
So like one acre per unit, is that kind of how it's broken down?
I could talk to you about this for hours.
Oh, no, no, I'm talking about, it's like.
I know, so it's, I don't even know how to describe it, like, like, sort of quickly and not bore everybody to tears here. So a lot of, land use in town, it goes back decades. Like, the process to get something built and approved is, it takes years. That, the project that you're referring to, you know, the M&amp;T proposal, has been, has been on, before the planning board since, for like 20 years now, 15 years. And they've got multiple approvals along the way and so, you know. But what happens in those, in that time, things change. And, and I grew, I've been here since 1971, there's always a concern over how the land is being, is, you know, is being developed. Case in point, the Home Depot, that was, we were, the township was sued to prevent the Home Depot from coming. The Toll Brothers, Toll Brothers was also sued to prevent Toll Brothers from coming. So over time, these, you know, the, there's, every piece of park, property in town is zoned for something, every single piece. So a developer has a reasonable right to go in, to build to what the, what that code is. And so that's the short version. Basically, every piece of property is zoned, it goes on for a long time, it's, they're all designated, there's a master plan behind it. The master plan gets reviewed periodically, but all these meetings are all public too, they're all noticed, you know. It's hard for us to get the message, we talk about this stuff as much as we can. But the planning board meetings, there are, the developers have to notice, the township has to notice that we're holding, holding planning board meetings in addition to master plan meetings. So we put out as much notice as we can. Generally, most people don't come to the meetings, unless they're noticed. So, but by, I don't know, like I say, it's too late, but they're, the process is long and we try to address as many concerns as we can, if it's at the planning board, it could also be at the zoning board too. But we try and address as, as many of the residents' concerns as we can, with the caveat that the developer still has some reasonable expectation to build to what it's zoned for.
So I, I understand, like, if it's a commercial property, you're gonna obviously develop it commercially versus a residential, I, I understand that aspect. I guess I'm just, and I understand it's 20 years, but also there's definitely a reason why they haven't been able to actually do it in 20 years, right? There's other, there's other obstacles, we'll just leave that there, but.
Well, so, well, excuse me, so, things change, you know, so you have to sort of change with, you sort of have to change with the times. So in that project, that was originally approved for age-restricted townhouses or apartments, a long time. Yeah, there's, yeah, it was, but anyway, so it, it got approved. Before leaving office, Governor Cozine signed legislation that any age-restricted multifamily that was approved but not yet built, which is that one, could then be changed to market rate units. Is that fair? I don't, I don't exactly think so, we didn't adopt it, that came down from the state. In addition to that, there's pending legislation at the state right now, Mr. Connor, you can double check me, right? That the, that there's, that somebody is pushing a bill, I don't know how far it is, that will, without any local planning, will allow office parks and retail centers to bypass local zoning, planning boards and build to whatever standard. Explain it a little bit better.
Simplistically, that's exactly what.
So that means they have to, that means our approval, they don't need planning board approval and it, it's not yet signed, but it's, I don't know, it's in the works.
The task committee, I don't know how far.
So, so when we do this stuff on the planning board, we try to get ahead of, you know, like I said, we try to get ahead of the curve and, and, and keep an eye on pending legislation and pending lawsuits and how that affects building. To try and, you know, we don't really wanna get sued at the planning board. As a taxpayer myself here, I don't want my money going to attorneys, I don't. So we try and get ahead of the building stuff as best we can.
Okay, so, I guess as, as a resident, right, of Lacy and a taxpayer, obviously myself and everything else, a mother and so on and so forth. I still, and maybe this is just my breakdown, I'm not really understanding the process, but like, what can you say to me or everybody else? Like, we wanna be on the same team, right? Like, we all, we all know what's best for Lacy, right? And everybody's idea of what's great in Lacy is different. But like, if your hearing, which I think you guys have heard in the past and are constantly hearing, is that people in Lacy wanna be in Lacy because it's not hugely developed. So like, what can you say about this ordinance change or all these other developments that are coming in to ease us as residents that like, we're, we are kind of on the same team? Like, I understand obviously town needs to like, make revenue, like, there's, you know, things that happen when you have certain kind of commercial buildings and, you know, like, I understand all that, but at what cost, right?
Let me jump in, committee member, if I could?
I want you to take solace in this, this, this is something we may not like to do. We are compelled to do this by state law, under threat of a lawsuit, that's the way this works. I will tell you this, there's two good pieces, bits of news here. The initial COA, 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 H Coalition on Affordable Housing that came through was some of our very own sandy displaced people. And in addition to that, when you look at our 86 square miles mapped out, there's a large portion of it that's protected pine lands that cannot be developed. So they say they're making more people, they're not making more land, that's true. Other towns, third piece of information, have significantly more COA residents than we have. So this committee and this land use board, I think, has done really, really good work in advocating as much as we can for the people, we're, we're one of them. I, I live behind Shopper, you live in Lenoka Harbor, we're close, I don't know you or where you live, but I know we're close. So I could tell you that we put a lot of deep thought into this. And those three facts, those three things that I just said to you, they are true. So I want you to know that we're managing this as best that we can. We have a lot of protected pine lands and a lot of lots that you can't build on, so that's what I have, is that right?
Yeah, that's, that's right. And it is, just to be clear, that, the, the project, the M&amp;T's proposal is, it's not affordable housing.
No, it doesn't matter, it does.
Some people, you know, I have to, you know.
It's volume, that area, the infrastructure.
Okay, so, let's suppose, let's just suppose hypothetically, the planning board denies this application, completely denies it. It'll go off to Toms River to the courts. If that court doesn't remand it back, it'll go to the appellate court. If that court doesn't remand it back, it'll go to the Supreme Court, okay? If the Supreme Court doesn't remand it back, you know what has to happen? No, the town has to buy that piece of property. Okay? At fair market value. So Steve, Steve and I were talking yesterday about this very issue. And I said to him, what would be the going rate for that piece of property right now? Now, understand this, there's another part of this. That the variances that the, the, the builder's looking for, when you go to sell that property to the township, under the law are considered already there. Okay, even though they're not there, by law they're considered, that drives the value of the property up. Steve estimated, now, he's not an appraiser or anything else like that, $20 million. We would have to come out of pocket, $20 million to buy that piece of property and do what with, another park? I don't know. But again.
I think every resident would be happy with another park, honestly.
They'd be happy with it, but it's 20 million and we haven't, we haven't done anything to it, to improve, to make it a park where your kids, where your grandson or anybody could play, because this is gonna take years to happen.
So Deputy Mayor, I know that there was a similar piece of property, but a smaller scale size, that, there's an article in the paper about, and I, I don't know the specifics, who said it, but it was somebody, you know, of political in Lacy. That the property had some like protections to it and it was on Route Nine somewhere and they were looking to build and they were actually asking for, you know, the town to purchase the land, but there was some kind of funding. I can get the article to be more specific, because I am talking about the generality.
So that's, again, people say things, so that was Ocean County, Natural Lands Trust.
Yes, that's what's.
So Route Nine, there's nothing pristine or nice about Route Nine, right? So, so personally, and this is just my opinion, Ocean County, so in order for that to happen, the person that owns the property has to be a willing seller. The town, the county's not gonna do it or anybody's, they're just gonna go in and take it. So he's not a willing seller, so that, so it's, you know. But in addition to that, I, myself personally, I don't want my tax, my, my tax dollars too. I don't want my, you know, if Ocean County is using my tax dollars to buy property on Route Nine and Lacy, I'd be gravely disappointed that they're not buying stuff in the pine lands, which, that's where they should be buying it. If you're gonna preserve property, Lacy has a lot, my own opinion on this, Lacy has a lot of preserved property west of the Parkway. Route Nine shouldn't, and there's nothing that should be saved along Route Nine.
So I don't, again, obviously speaking.
We can argue volume, like, the size of the project, you know, like, that's, that's different, but there's not, there's nothing worth saving on Route Nine. As a matter, my opinion is that the entirety should be knocked down and rebuilt, personally.
So I, I don't know if there's like, I personally wouldn't be opposed, I would understand commercially developing Route Nine, I think that's a fair thing, right? I mean, we don't need another gas station right across from a gas station, like, everybody I think can understand that they hate that. But if you, if you develop like the front of Route Nine, that's one thing, but the whole back of it is like, there's such good land act there.
It's 28, so it's 28 acres zoned commercially, that's, that's what it is, it's on, it's how it's zoned, so when.
So there's no way around that?
Well, no, there is, so, so, as I said, we haven't done it in a while now. When you redo the master plan, that's sort of how you sort of change the zones, you get set it, but you have to have, you know, you have to have some forethought into what you're, you know, where is your town gonna grow? You don't want it to not grow. We could debate how much, 1%, 5%, you know, there is, there are limits, but you, you don't really necessarily want it to remain flat, because it drives the investment. It's, it's always helpful if Route Nine gets developed, because that's straight, the, the, the commercial properties don't, they support all the, they support the parks, all their tax dollars go to stuff that the rest of us use. And there's not really gonna be any more residential developments in Lacy, there's, there's.
So, and that's, I think, one of my things is, you know, like, going to massive apartments.
So, keep backing up, it's like 20 years, the township had tried to, you know, it was a push at the township committee back then to, to get the town center designation for, for Lacy Township. They were, they were working on it for 20 years, so they put it, you know, that was something that the, that the town wanted to do. What that does is allows, you know, called more development along the commercial corridors. So we got our town center endorsement after 20 years, about three, four years ago. And so that's, that's why you see a lot of this development now, but the state, that's a state endorsement. But the state came in and the state's push is, they have a big housing push. The states, and we were only trying at the time to do, just to get increased commercial usage out of Route Nine. And they said, we'll, we'll allow you to do increased commercial usage as long as you provide residential as well, so.
So you basically made a deal that like, we, in order to have the retails, we also now have to have.
Yes, correct, yes. Multi-use, called multi-use.
I did, multi, yeah.
That's the only thing that he's saying to you, because I've had to listen to it, it's a lot to do with the state. This isn't just Lacy Township coming up with these ideas, the state comes, tells us what's gonna be done. It just doesn't come from us, it comes from the state.
I understand that, I just, I, I, like, in so many things, like, if you go from like massive high-rise apartments that I can go on about, like, you know, again, infrastructure, safety, resources, you know, all that kind of stuff. To a simplicity of like, I don't understand how or why it's not more beneficial to have actual single-family homes there. Like, if, like, some of the land, I know that there's some stuff going on with the land, but like, in the area that is developable, like, like, isn't that more taxpayer money for everybody? And like, that would make everybody feel that there's not this massive amount of people that are transient people. I want, I, I, we rented an apartment before we were able to purchase a house, I know what it's like. But it is transient, it is, it's, they're not invested in this town, they're here for a second and then they're out.
You get a lot, you could get, I mean, I, I can under, I mean, there's, you know, there's.
It's not every person, I'm not trying to talk everyone, but the generality or the majority would be more transient and I just feel like people may feel a little bit more like secure knowing that.
I agree to a point, but there is a lot of rental, small, single-family rental houses there that are very transient as well. I know, I have four of them. Only four houses, yes, rental houses.
So, all right, so let's conclude, I think you understand how I feel, but.
We understand how you feel. We understand how you feel. I think if we had, if we had our brothers, yeah, but because of, because of the, the master plan and the mistake that was made, that is why we're here, because minimum was, ma, minimum was changed for maximum, that was right first, okay? That is why we're here. If that hadn't been here, changed, we wouldn't be here.
I would encourage you, I would encourage you to come to the planning board meeting.
Oh, absolutely, I've, I have been, but they keep canceling.
They're allowed, they're allowed to cancel, so, without noticing us, they're allowed.
Well, I would tell you, if you want to know what's going on with the agendas and so forth like that, call down to our land development, I want to speak to Sue Conner, okay? Ask her to send you a copy of the agenda.
You can sign up for our mailing list right off of our website, and she will email you out the agendas within forty-eight hours prior to the, you know, Board of Adjustment meeting or Planning Board meeting.
And our, and our agendas are up on the website, how fast?
They're up by Tuesday.
By Tuesday?
Forty-eight hours before the meeting.
Before, before the meeting. Have any questions, please feel free to call, call us, and send me an email, send any of us an email, we will get back.
So, again, maybe off topic, but obviously, like, you guys are working professionals, we are too, so if, in a case, like, you couldn't attend a meeting, is there a virtual option? Or is there a way to submit comment before or after?
Yeah, submit a written comment, you write a comment, yeah. But you need to do it before, because once they take the vote on it, right on. So you need to do, do that before when you see something, is to submit a written comment, yeah.
Now, I don't know about the planning board, they're never on that, but the Board of Adjustments, they give, they, they're allowed to not give it a whole lot of weight, because it's clause I judicial, so, just so true.
Okay.
One other comment to you, I just want to say, just though this isn't your wheelhouse, did an excellent job up here.
Yes, yes, you did, very well.
It's not easy to talk in front of a group of people, it really isn't.
No, I appreciate that.
Can I ask you what you do for a living? You said, you said you weren't, you said you're a professional, just, I just curious. If you don't want to tell me, that's fine.
I'm a detective.
You're a detective? Ah, so you know how to question people. You did a good job.
So I understand, if it's the law, it's the law, I understand that, um, but it's, again, wrapping, like I said, it's not my normal wheelhouse, I don't know land use.
Listen, listen, you said zoom in, you can only zoom in if you're on a boardwalk and it's allowed back.
I'll, I'll give you my cellphone after the meeting, if you want, if you have any further questions, or after the meeting or any other time.
I appreciate that.
So, you just understand, I mean, we don't just wing decisions, you know, until it goes into it, it really does.
I understand you don't wing decisions, and, like I said, it's just hard, I don't speak for anybody else who's here, I know residents that I have spoken with, everyone is just like, what does all this mean? Like, you know, if you're changing minimum to maximum, like, we here maximum, so they're allowing more, and what is that going to do? So...
Again, I'd be happy to show you that document, it's not a problem.
It's available on our website.
It's available, she put it up on the website, so it's there, we're not trying to pull the wool over anybody's, I'm just trying to do it the right way.
Can I say that to you?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Detective.
You know, one, one other thing, I'd just like you, the builder who is built...
May, may, may.
Maybe building this, he built a place up in Freehold, right?
If you, if you want to see what, how much it would look like...
Beautiful, we're not talking about...
On the, it was on the corner of, uh...
I think it's Devon Place, I think it's called up in Freehold, it's called The Edge at Freehold.
Right, right on, right on Route Nine, the other side of Lake, we looked at it, that's basically, Steve and I went up to see it, what, about four years ago, Steve? And it, it's gorgeous, absolutely gorgeous.
We know, we feel it.
I, I, I don't care, it's, like, a million dollar, you know, I have a little boy, and the cul-de-sac that we live on, he has like, free rain, and the car's zoomed by already, and I just can imagine how many more cars and, you know, so, I don't, I don't, it's just, it's a lot.
We feel you.
Thank you very much. Hold on, I'll get to it, I'm gonna see, and does anybody else, before I bring up, Regina, one more time, anybody else have any comments?
Yes. Jim News, Regina Avenue, Forker River. I'm just here also to say I'm big time against this, adding about four thousand cars probably to a small area, which is bad enough. As far as lots that can't be built on, I live next to a half lot that has, now has a house on it, and my driveway is a lake, so I don't take that, that comment so written in stone, you know what I'm saying? What I'm trying to say is though, I know you're in a position to do what you, you know, what you have to do, but you're also the stewards of this town, we depend on you to defend us, right? I mean, it's what it, these Girl Scouts, you, you ask them, do you know about Lacey's history? What about Lacey's future? And this is, this is turn, like, I, I know North Jersey, I grew up a lot, Hackensack was a nice little town in the seventies when I grew up there. Now, it's, they've built so insanely up there, twenty-story buildings, all along what, what we did, River Road, which is like their Route Nine. Now, instead of looking to the side of your car, you see parks or the Hackensack River, you're seeing walls, it's like driving through the Lincoln Tunnel. And Route Nine, although it might be commercial and everything else, I understand that, but this is, you know, it's just too much of a drain on, on the schools and, and everything else. Our taxes are going up anyway, you're alluding to, we'll have to pay lawyers, and that's our taxes, but they're going to go up anyway, from the extra police cars, from the maintenance vehicles, all these extra things that comes with, with, with how many people, eight thousand, whatever it is, each condo has, I don't know, a couple of people, each, nowadays, everybody has two or three cars in the same house, it's just, it's going to be, and Route Nine is in a, they should call it eternity road, because it's constantly being worked on. When they get one end of it fixed by Home Depot, and then, then there's, you're facing lights and everything else on the other side, and it, it's just, I, I'm just, I, I know you're, you have to do what you gotta do, but, I mean, we, you know, you're our elected officials to, to stand up for us, and, and you're like, saying this is a gorgeous place, and you're almost like selling it, you know what I'm saying?
We're not doing that.
I mean, no matter what it looks like, it doesn't matter.
I'm not selling, I'm not selling, I'm just telling you, it's not going to be riff rap coming in there, which we don't want.
And again, we...
Some people in Walmart might disagree with that statement, you know what I mean? I got attacked in there two years ago, whatever.
Okay, what I'm saying is, is, if you, if you think about what's happening here, those rents will be in the neighborhood of two thousand dollars a month, okay? They're not cheap rents. And this, this builder, now, he did this up in, uh, in, in the Freehold lot, and I'm hoping that Steve, and I need to talk to Steve about this, as he sits on the planning board, is what he does is a percentage of the apartments or the condos that are in there, he discounts the rent for vets. That's a good thing, that's a great thing. So that's, that's a very good thing, and so, he, he's, he's very, very conscious of what it looks like and making sure that it's done the right way and that quality people come in here, so it is, so...
And I do, I just want to emphasize the, the, like, like what I said before about the COA units, we negotiate, we, I mean, it's always a negotiation at some point, and so, we, we negotiated, we, believe me, we don't want, it was twelve hundred units, we negotiated down to a hundred and eighty, I mean, we're, that's a good job. If we didn't do that, and we just said, thundered our nose at the state and said, you know what, we're not, we don't care about COA, we're going to just do what we want, you could have these units all over the place with almost no say.
It's almost like the mafia when they come in.
Well, so, but my point is, you know, again, we just try and cut the best deal we can, that's, that's, you know, that's all we can do.
I think it was, was it Hillsdale, Hillsdale that got a, a prob, they, they, they went against it? Was it builders remedy lawsuits, Steve, is that, go, go?
Actually...
Google that, I, I think it's Hillsdale and so forth like that, they got destroyed.
So, and, and is it, was it Howell, it just happened?
Essex.
Howell, so in Howell, it's in Asbury Park Press, Howell, the, they negotiate, the township committee negotiated with the developer to build their COA requirement, I want to say it was something like two hundred units, all COA. They went before the planning board, the planning board agreed, when it went back before the township committee to authorize, to sign a resolution, the township committee reneged on the deal and voted no. They turned around, sued them in court, got, the judge told them, not only are you building the two hundred units, they had to pay a hundred and eighty thousand in, you know, called it a, basically a fine. So, so we try to avoid that, I don't want to, you know, there...
Well, I know, but what I'm saying is, well, I'm almost doing a measuring scale of, okay, taxes fighting this thing, or taxes...
But, okay...
There's nothing we can lose to do everything.
If we lost, if we lost on the builders remedy lawsuit, they don't, they don't need to come before the township, they don't need to come before the planning board, they can build what, they want to go ten stories up, guess what? They're going up.
But even, I mean, even the way the, even the way MT has...
It's not, it's...
Think about the, what was this, this is like about the fourth planning board meeting on this, but the, even the way they do it and the way they treat the residents of this town, like, these people get babysitters, they make arrangements, they come here, and then they get here and it's like a form letter, fill in data, meeting, oh, sorry, due to circumstances, that, they, they do it the night, and everybody is already here and stuff, there's no before, like, they can't make it, I don't know, I've been in court a few times, and I know I couldn't pull that off. I'll be there when I get there, they don't...
First of all, it's not really court per se, it's, it's a meeting, they have the right to, to modify their plan. The other problem with that is any modification of any plan, whether it be for the Board of Adjustment or the Planning Board, must be submitted ten days prior to the meeting, so that our professionals can review it to make sure it meets code and state requirements. So, if they...
The only reason I bring that up is because that's what a defense lawyer would do, right? They keep a journey, because if they have a criminal, because what happens is the witnesses can't take off work anymore to make the court appearances, or the, they just, they move out of town, or they lose interest or whatever it is, and then it, it dies down, it's like when you get a bad news story, right? And then it dies down, it goes out of the news cycle, and then it's gone, you know, kind of thing, but, but I'm just, like I said, I'm just, big vote no.
Appreciate your opinion, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, hold on, this lady, Kevin, hold on, this lady has a...
I didn't see her handle, sorry.
No problem, come on down. Then I'll, then I'll go to Kevin, then I'll go to you, Jim.
I have another question.
Okay.
Hi, Laurel Fitz, Cameron Court. Courtney already spoke, we speak often, so really, everything Courtney said, I would just like to say that I do agree with, and she represented what I would want to say well, too. Um, I did have two questions, though, to add to it, with, I know you had said something about Route Nine and that article about asking to have the county buy it or whatever, and it being protected, and Route Nine might not be the best way, place to do that, but this plot of land is up against the rail trail, and there's already protected land there that they're trying to get a variance for, to give us land in Little Lake Harbor in exchange for our protected land here, and I know that's planning and zoning and things, but it, to me, seems like a good plot of land to like, add to our green space, and...
But it's, it's up to the developer to do it.
I know, I know, I'm just, I, I'm just saying, though, like, this is a good spot, and I hope that they don't approve the variances, and that was my next question. You had mentioned something about having to purchase this, and that the, the variances would be included in the cost of the land. Are the variances all already passed?
No, 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 no.
Oh, okay.
When you go...
No, I, I don't...
No, I, like, it should be, yes.
This is the planning board's...
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to make sure...
We really, we shouldn't be talking about this, this, you know, it's not the proper forum.
Right, because it's too, I understand, they kind of go together, and, so I just wanted to make sure of that, because, you know, the protected land is, is important to me, and I have, and I can...
Just, just real quick, when you go to sell property, the variances are assumed to be in place already.
Okay.
That's, that's, that's a down thirty.
Because, um, you know, the people of Lacey, and I know that there's a lot of people that live in Lacey, so maybe in the scheme of it, it's a small amount, but I know that there is a petition out there that, you know, asks people to, asks to be considered to do the same thing and protect the land, and it's just the voice of Lacey, they may not be here in the meeting, and I think people are very overwhelmed by coming to the meeting and trying to understand this.
Yes.
It's so hard, but people do, they don't, the, people in Lacey chatter kept saying, we don't have a say, they're going to do what they want, whatever, and, you know, I tried to encourage people to come to the meetings and come to the planning, and I'm, I'm saying that now, too, I hope people do come to the planning, there's no meeting...
They can send us emails, there can be messages for us to call them back, we will get back to them. This is, this is a board that wants to be interactive with the community and get their opinion, we really, really do, but if we don't get the emails, and we don't get the phone calls, and they don't show up at meetings, what are we supposed to do?
And I just hope, I just hope that I'm trusting you, that when you talk about a typo, that the typo is, it, it, it's a typo and the typo wasn't in the master plan, because where was the typo? But I understand what you're saying, and I'm, I'm trusting, I'm listening to what you say, but I'm...
Go onto our website, you'll see where the mistake is.
Yeah, I just, I want to hear that we don't want overdevelopment in Lacey though, too. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
How's Jim, I'll, I'll wait for the planning board.
Okay, thanks, Regina.
I just have a question about the discussions, because I reviewed the plans for the lots at Lacey back in May before I went away, um, wasn't one of the buildings supposed to be designated as COA housing? One building, because there's nine buildings in the project.
This is not the, I appreciate the question, this is not the board for it, I don't, I don't remember this, we're not discussing the planning board here.
Right, but you went into a very lengthy discussion about our COA requirements, and they're almost there.
Yeah, that's township, township COA requirements, not a specific property, an applicant that we haven't heard the, we haven't heard yet.
Right, you said we've met the requirement by a hundred and twenty already, and then finishing off cornerstone...
For the township-wide COA, yes.
Right, and...
That, it doesn't go away, we're just completing what they say we owe them.
Is that including...
So what happens is, by twenty-five, they're going to recapitulate our number, it tells us how many more units we have to do. Besides new units, you also have to do rehab units.
Right, but the seventy that you just had on that other one is like...
That means by court order settlement, none of this new stuff counts, it will count towards my future...
That's not COA.
It's not COA. That's not COA over there.
It's ten percent, it's not COA, ten percent.
Right, a small portion, okay, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Anybody else, or you move on?
Seeing none, motion to close the floor.
Second.
Second.
Can I have a motion on the ordinance?
Move it.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
This is Juliana, and this is Mr. Curatolo. It's Deputy Mayor McDonald. It's Deputy Mayor McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Dyckel's phone tied, so that's why he...
Okay, so some good news and stuff that people can enjoy here. Resolution twenty-two-two-zero-three, appointing a new deputy municipal clerk.
Resolution attached to Lacey County, motion stated in Jersey, appointing Amy McGuckin as deputy municipal clerk for the township of Lacey. Well, gang, I've been here for almost forty years, and we are going to start to transition me out, so we need to do some cross-training, and we hired Amy to be the deputy to eventually take over my role as municipal clerk.
Before I call for a vote here, this is, you know, Veronica has indicated that sooner rather than later, she's going to be retiring, and deputy clerk, or the clerk of this town is a very vital position. It's not somebody you can just snatch off the street and put them into this position. It can't be done that way. So what you have to do is have a deputy clerk transition that, teach them how to do everything, the history, the town, the whole bit, needs to be done. As you can see, Veronica does a lot up here, and this is why we made this move now. Has Veronica given us an exact date? No. As far as I'm concerned, she can stay here forever, but she has indicated this, so we need to move forward. This is part of a planning for post-Veronica era, so...
Can we have a motion on the resolution?
Motion on this?
Move it.
This is Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Let me introduce you to Amy McGuckin, she's sitting right over there, she's the deputy clerk. Resolution twenty-two-dash-two-zero-four, appointing a maintenance and repair position for DPW.
Resolution attached to Lacey County, motion stated in Jersey, authorizing the employment of Jack Hudson as a full-time maintenance and repair for the Department of Public Works.
Motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution twenty-two-two-zero-five, appointing labor for DPW.
Resolution attached to Lacey County, motion stated in Jersey, authorizing the employment of James E. Barker as a full-time labor for the Department of Public Works. Motion?
Move it. Second.
This is Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDonald?
Yes, resolution twenty-two-two-zero-six, making various promotions in the DPW.
A resolution attached to Lacey County, motion stated in Jersey, authorizing various provisional promotions in the Department of Public Works for the township of Lacey pending promotional procedures by the Civil Service Commission. We are promoting Taylor Riley to supervisor for public works, James Weiserberger as senior mechanic, Jeff Pasqua as senior maintenance and repair, Richard Larsson as motor room operator, Matthew Devaney as road repair.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
This is Juliana?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDonald?
Yes, resolution twenty-two-two-zero-seven, authorizing the leave of absence.
Resolution attached to Lacey County, motion stated in Jersey, authorizing leave of absence for Sean Goodhart under the Family Medical Leave Act for medical purposes.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
This is Juliana?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDonald?
Yes, resolution twenty-two-two-zero, authorizing an application to the DOT for the Northwest Barnacle Pine Phase Three.
Resolution attached to Lacey County, motion stated in Jersey, authorizing the filing of an application for state aid to municipalities under the New Jersey Transportation Trust Fund Authority Act for the Northwest Barnacle Pine Street Road Improvement Project Phase Three. This is priority number one for twenty-twenty-three. We are asking for a grant in the amount of four hundred and twenty-five thousand, seven dollars and fifty cents.
Move it.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
This is Juliana?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDonald?
Yes, resolution twenty-two-two-zero-nine, authorizing an application to the DOT for the Cranberry Hill Phase One.
Resolution attached to Lacey County, motion stated in Jersey, authorizing the filing of an application for state aid to municipalities under New Jersey Transportation Trust Fund Authority Act for the Cranberry Hill Road Improvement Project Phase One, and this is priority number two, in the amount of eight hundred and one thousand, four hundred, three dollars and fifty cents. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
This is Juliana?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDonald?
Yes, resolution twenty-two-two-zero, dash-two-one-zero, authorizing a contract to Stryker Medical.
Resolution attached to Lacey County, motion stated in Jersey, authorizing a contract to Stryker Medical to provide equipment for the Lenox Harbor EMS. These are items that were approved during the budget session. We are approving two Stryker Power Lift Stretchers and six LifePak Defibrillators.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
This is Juliana?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDonald?
Yes, resolution twenty-two-two-zero, authorizing the placement of a lien on block four-twenty last month.
Resolution attached to Lacey County, motion stated in Jersey, accepting certification of the direct of public works concerning costs incurred in the removal of debris cleaning up of the property located at twenty-five Monolith Boulevard, and authorizing the placement of a lien against said property for said cost in the amount of two hundred and twenty dollars and eighty-two cents.
Second.
This is Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDonald?
Yes, resolution twenty-two-two-zero, authorizing the refund of deposit monies.
Resolution attached to Lacey County, motion stated in Jersey, authorizing the refund of deposits held for the use of municipal facilities. Motion?
Move it. Second.
This is Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDonald?
Yes, resolution twenty-two-two-zero, authorizing the payment of township bills.
Resolution attached to Lacey County, motion stated in Jersey, authorizing the payment of township bills in the amount of six million, five hundred and twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred and five dollars and nineteen cents. Motion to pay the bills?
Move it. Second.
This is Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDonald?
Yes, on D zero-four-zero-zero. What are the reports?
For the month of June, the municipal clerk's office collected receipts in the amount of ten thousand, four hundred and eighty-nine dollars and eighty-eight cents. Municipal court for the month of May collected receipts in the amount of thirteen thousand, sixty-eight dollars and forty-three cents, and this is actually a good month. We've seen that the courts are much more active, since they've changed some of the rules and have come back in. Treasurers report for the DPW for the month of June was road opening permits in the amount of four thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars, recycling commodity in the amount of one thousand, six hundred and seventeen dollars and sixty cents, truck parking in the amount of three hundred and twenty-five dollars. Community development for the month of June collected receipts in the amount of seventy thousand, two hundred and forty-four dollars. Motion to accept the reports is read.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve township meeting minutes of June twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two.
Move it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve the caucus meeting minutes of June twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two.
Move it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve Rappel licenses for the North Harbor Fire Company.
Move it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Comments, submit to me.
Can I have some amendments first?
Oh, sure.
So I have two add-ons. First is a resolution two-fourteen, it's a resolution attached to Lacey County, motion stated in Jersey, accepting the retirement of a municipal employee. As we all know, our chief of police has decided to retire as of December first, so I just need a motion to accept that retirement.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
This is Juliana?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDonald?
Yes.
And the next one is resolution two-sixteen, it's a resolution attached to Lacey County, motion stated in Jersey, appointing an on-the-bus driver for the recreation department. We need an additional bus driver. We are hiring somebody, it's a seasonal, part-time position. Jillian Stryker is the qualified individual. Motion?
Move it.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
This is Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Comments from the community, uh, community court.
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor. As you just heard, our administrator talked about Chief's retirement. Just want to put out personal feelings, I know how everyone feels about the chief. He's been everywhere. He does so much more than law enforcement, does education, does prevention, worked with counselors, did the Blue Heart Program, reduced calls for mental illness, substance abuse, domestic violence. It's gonna be a huge loss for this town. He's a great man, he was a great chief. I'm glad he's gonna be with us till December first, although I'm sure he'll be burning some time. I was very fortunate, fortunate to be invited to his home this past Saturday, where obviously he was recognized by the Rotary Club, who's done so much in our town. So they made him president of our local Rotary chapter, and I was there with Committeewoman Juliana. So I just want to thank the chief. I've been out speaking with him many, many times, and a huge loss, a great man, I think a giant in our town, and a fine family. Person in our audience, I want to conclude my comments with President Fran Ciforte of Seabreeze Community. I avail myself of public speaking at any time. Yesterday, I was fortunate enough to be invited to Seabreeze Clubhouse, where it was, that room was pretty much filled to capacity, and I brought county resources there to bear, from our Department of Senior Services, and our Department of Business Development and Tourism, nurses there. So, and, and I will do that for any group that asks, and I do that all around the county. So I want to thank the folk, good folks at Seabreeze, means a lot to be invited. I certainly am planning on going up to Pheasant Run in the near future. Like I said, anywhere that's necessary. I'm gonna be also speaking at Old Guard Two on August first. So it's something I like to do, and just build those ties that bind in the community, and I'm very, very grateful. I don't take any of it lightly. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, maybe Kennis?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, chief, I'm gonna save my comments for the chief. He's next month?
October, uh, in October, I'm sorry, August eleventh, it'll be down.
Yeah, we'll save my comments for his retirement next month. Just two notes, are the tax collector's report came out, it's a fairly interesting read, a lot of data in there, but it, you know, gives Lacey's collection rate, you know, the highest taxpayers in town, and what the ratable base is, so it's, you know, interesting if anybody was to stop in and take a look at it.
It's actually available on our website.
It's on the website. And the other thing I just wanted to mention, that occurred to planning board last month, a resident came in concerned about the South Street crossing railroad right away from, it's still a dirt road, the dirt portion of it, onto the, the portion by Hebrew Park. And Commissioner Quinn had the, had the engineers already go out there and put a pedestrian crosswalk in there, so I just want to thank him for, for jumping on it that quick. Those are my comments.
Last but not least, give it to Juliana.
There's so much. Anyhow, first, I'd like to say thank you. I'm glad people are out, because I'm a big promoter of stop talking on social media and come here, ask your questions, get some answers, get your frustration out by letting us know what's bothering you, I think that's very important. To not just show up when it's that issue that's bothering you, though, you should be here more. We need more people to come out. I appreciate somebody like Kevin Flynn, who comes all the time because he's interested, Barry Bensner, Regina, you need to come here and know what's going on in your town. That's important to be here and not talk on social media. That's one thing. I also would like to thank our police department. They handled a situation last week that I, I will not get into, but I will tell you that this is the reason that we need to back the blue, because without them, we would not have the town that we have. So it's important to always stand behind them and give them respect. Again, I always thank our volunteers in this town, we're very fortunate to have, and we lost one of them, a great man, a great family here in our town, the Repetti family, Andrew Repetti, the man actually, thirty-something years ago, started our girls softball. So, you know, when you lose somebody that was around for the beginning of things, it's, it's tough, and I send my deepest sympathy to the family, but thank you, thank you.
Thank you, okay. I too reserve my right, might talk, talk about the chief at the appropriate time. I did go through the tax report. I would encourage anyone to go through it, any questions, give us a call, let us know. It's very, very good. Our tax collection is up again. I think, if I'm not incorrect, Steve, you have there a funny, I think, third...
Ninety-nine point, ninety-nine point five.
Ninety-nine point five percent, which is very, very good, and we're third in all of Ocean County, making sure the taxes got collected. So that, that's a very good thing. The other thing I want to bring up is Amy, welcome. She's, she's been here for a week. I don't know if she's gonna report tomorrow because of the meeting tonight, but we'll, we'll fly, we'll fly it out, and we look forward to great things from her in the future. The other thing is, I've been talking about this for a while, that the energy receipt taxes. Well, we got word from New Jersey, we didn't get six million, we didn't get two million, which is what we're being floated out of there, but we did get something. We got seven hundred and fifty...
Five hundred and seventy-nine, please.
Five hundred, five hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars a year, uh, in energy receipt taxes. Now, that's a good thing, more money coming into the town with the energy receipt tax. So we'll be able to do some things with that. It takes a little bit of pressure off of us, it's a good thing for you, because, I don't know, I haven't worked the formula out yet, but our ability to raise taxes is based on non-grant money, per se, money that comes from the state or grants. So when we're getting more, that means our ability to raise the taxes becomes less. So we'll have to, we'll, we'll figure that out probably in November, December, when we're looking at the taxes.
Just so you know, there are strict guidelines on how that money has to be used.
Yeah, we just can't go out and buy something, we have to reduce the taxes, right? So we gotta figure that out. There's a lot of work ahead of us to do that. The July Fourth fireworks, or actually July Fifth fireworks, were great. I don't know if anybody attended them. I thought they were the best we've had in years. It was, it was fantastic. The girls here, this is, this is what makes Lacey great, this type of stuff, where you have Girl Scouts, and you have Boy Scouts, and you have the baseball players, and so forth like that, coaches like Lou Vassillo, and everybody else that makes, that just, makes our kids better in the character. And the kids want to come back here. You'd be surprised how many people are natives to Lacey Township. It's, it's, it's amazing all that. So I, so with that, I will conclude my, my comments, and open it up to the public. Does the public have any comments here tonight? Mr. Bender?
Yeah, just a quick question, and it's back to what we've been talking about all night. Barry Bender, historic Bay Avenue, the development that they're gonna put on Route Nine.
Might.
Might put on Route Nine. They're planning on...
Wait twenty years.
Yes, okay. Here's, here's the question. They have to get approval from the DOT, correct? And that they have not received yet.
I don't know, they might.
Okay, they may or may not have it, because, I mean, my issue is, we're stuck here with two-lane Route Nine, and we've put a bunch of stores...
But Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, if they, when they get permission, they, and substantially change, they gotta come back to the planning board, right?
No, it's a, it's a DOT by themselves, whatever DOT says.
Oh, I thought, which one are you, which one are you talking about?
I'm talking about the one between Carney Bank and CBS.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I had, I had the wrong problem.
That's the one that concerns me, because right now, okay, when I drive on Route Nine, and I go into work three days a week, I'm only home two days a week, so even when I come home at night, okay, coming down Lacey Road and making a right turn, there's many, many times, okay, when the people stop, and sometimes they don't, and don't, then block the intersection, but we've got this, we still got the traffic with all the things we've done. We've still got the traffic and bringing more people into town, okay? That's only gonna make the traffic worse, and my question is, the DOT, do they have the ability to nix a plan like this? Because if they, if you can't improve Route Nine, and you got two lanes, so they're basically gonna make Route Nine a parking lot for us.
So, so, yeah, could I deny it? Of course they can. Yeah, they're not, I can't see any reason why they would, but in addition, it's not just, so the light at, at, the light at Caffrey's should never have been, in my opinion, should have never been put there. And we've tried multiple times to contact the DOT to change the signal, the timing of it, so it's not, yeah, so they're, believe, yeah, Route Nine is awful, on the weekends especially, but it's not just from what, you know, you know, the building that's going on Route Nine. The light at Caffrey's backs traffic up by itself, if, you know, without built, without...
And as soon as you get past that light, there's no traffic.
I don't know, again, we, we bug them a lot about it, they will not change it, you know, but that's...
The amount of traffic on Route Nine, based on how we're developing this town, has increased enormously.
It's just not our town, it's Berkeley, it's Ware Town, the whole bit, every, you see the big project going on down in Ware Town, that's almost done, that's, I, I talked to the mayor down there, that's, that's another seven hundred and fifty people coming in.
Right, coming here, I mean...
In, in that project, then, it's gonna be a dump on the Route Nine. How do you get out of Ware Town?
Yeah, but to me, those people are gonna go south to Matterhaw.
Yeah, maybe, maybe not, you know, maybe not, you know.
We have the closest Wawa for them, they don't have a Wawa.
Right.
We have three.
We have three, right, so, you know, it's just not Lacey Township, you gotta look at everybody, you know...
But, but throwing a development like that on Route Nine, okay, if the DOT is looking at it, and if, maybe they can come up with some miracle, where Route Nine could be expanded to four lanes going through Lacey Township? Not in my lifetime, oh, yeah, I would have to be, the Red Sea would part first, okay?
The best you can, the best you can hope for from Route Nine is a turning lane in the middle. That's the best you're gonna hope for, and I don't see that happening.
But with all this coming in, okay, we have the traffic now, I mean, what is this, I don't want to have to go out and buy a helicopter to get, get through my town, okay? That's what I'm saying.
You got that kind of money?
Yeah, I wish. Barely repair my...
We get, we get, but the, the alternative is, is not good either.
Right, but the DOT, do they have the ability, like, for us, for argument's sake, because of nonsense that the state has done?
I think they could make them change it a little bit, they won't deny it. They could make them change it, they could make the mechanic modifications to it, entrance and exits, things like that, wider, wider the entrance, the ingress and egress, but to deny it, not gonna happen, because then, you know, this is, this is not, this isn't a small development, this is a guy that doesn't know...
Well, if it wasn't a big development, I wouldn't be here talking about it.
He's got developments throughout all New Jersey and Pennsylvania and stuff like that. He's got enough money to take a state of New Jersey on, and, and win, and win, and that's, I mean, it's, it's not, the, the game is rigged, per se.
Oh, absolutely, well, that's what I was getting at the last time I got up.
We're, we're, we're just trying to hang on, that's all.
Good luck to people getting up and down Route Nine, thank you very much.
Any other comments in the public? Yes, sir, Man of the Globe.
Hey, Renee Vanderherf from one-twenty-six Station Drive. I haven't been here in the last two weeks, I have a question, I don't know if it's out of town or any other.
Good for you.
But I got a couple of things I would like to address tonight. Number one, noise limits, where are we on the...
That's been adopted.
That's been adopted, so now it's, now it's enforceable?
Yes.
Very good, that's the first one. The other thing is, how are we going along with the ordinance for farm animals?
Mr. Conners' office is working on a draft ordinance with regards to, at this time, we were just addressing the chickens, and then we are looking at additional ordinances related to other types of farm animals, pigs, goats. In fact, I got somebody called today, wanted to know if they could have pigme goats in their yard, so I guess you're gonna make me sell the bronzer now. I was just like, I've never even heard of those type of goats.
Listen, listen, let me tell you something, let me interrupt you. I'm on your side. I mean, I fielded a call today from a complaint, with people taking dogs to ShopRite. ShopRite's a food store, and there are children that are allergic. So I don't know who picks it up, if a dog soils something. I love dogs, I have two of them. I just think there's a time and a place for some of this, but it's therapy dog all day long, but these, these quality of life issues, they bug me. I'm with you. I wrote the email to Veronica, say, let's take another hard look and look at something. I don't, you don't need a zoo to live next to you.
Right now, we're addressing the chickens, because that was the biggest...
Yeah, no, no, Mr. Curso, I, I appreciate it, especially when that's not, he came out and told me about some other things I could do about these chickens and stuff like that. Apparently, these people have been watching these meetings, because most of the chickens have disappeared, the roosters still there, and now they're cleaning up the, the dump, so it doesn't, no. So, you know, at least it's a little bit of problem.
We want to be fair to everybody, but if you're getting woken up at four in the morning, and people have cows on a forty-foot lot, that's just, maybe we ought to start to look at it.
You know, I, you know, we talked about, you know, people wanting their chicken eggs and stuff like that. Well, you don't get, I don't know how much you know about raising poultry, but you don't get violent eating eggs when you have a rooster in with your hens. It's as simple as that.
Yeah, you don't need a rooster to get your eggs.
No, 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 you have a rooster in with your hens, you don't get good eggs. Simple as that, and a rooster's in with the hens, so I don't think they, they're making eggs. Okay, the other thing is issued down by the rail trail and the bridge over here at Mill Pot. Now, everybody knows, the police have been down there several times for drug addicts and other things, but we have some other problems down here, so. The guy on a dirt bike or enduro bike driving up and down the trail, there's other guys, other people with mini bikes up and down the trail, and not supposed to be auto-authorized vehicles on here. Personnel care about an electric bike going up and down the trail, or the handicapped guy in his, in his power wheelchair, but a dirt bike, yes, I can care about that, and he's been very blatant about it. I hadn't been able to sit there and follow where it goes, but maybe we need that camera system back up there.
Well, I'll talk to the sheriff.
Yeah, we had moved the camera to another location where we were having some problems at, so we'll see if we can...
Yeah, the problems are starting to crop up over there again.
They keep moving around. We'll reach out to the sheriff and help you, and help get something.
And the last issue I'd like to, to talk about is railroad drive. Now, I know they just put a light out there where, where you come out from the backside of Home Depot. Are they gonna blow that road through the station?
That's, that's, eventually, yes.
Okay. Have you guys ever thought about what the traffic's gonna be like going down there, and everybody's gonna be avoiding the light at Lacey, and now the road that I live on is gonna be a little speedway going up and down there? I know, I know this is not an easy subject.
Yeah, we, we have, we have thought of it, I mean...
And that part of that's county road.
Right, the railroad avenue is at twenty-five mile an hour speed limit, so...
Yeah, but the, but station is thirty-five.
We can always change that, that's not a problem, we can change that, and what will happen is, what we will do, most likely, if you get complaints from neighbors, we'll tell the chief, whoever the chief is at that point in time, put that speed thing, it tells you how fast you're going, and if that doesn't work, we'll put cops there and get right, three or four tickets, and that'll slow it down.
We're in the planning stages of that, so there are things that we can plan and develop, to kind of do traffic calming measures in the area that we're getting, we're still in the infancy stages. We're still in the infancy stages, so there are things we can look at as we move along with that project.
Well, I think, I think one of the things that you might consider, number one is lower speed limit on station down here.
That's something we will ask the county.
Now, the other thing you might wanna look at is putting speed bumps in.
Like I said, there are traffic calming measures that we can look at.
Because they're not gonna go down there forty, fifty miles an hour with speed bumps.
We'll bring that up, Midtown, we, we did have a problem on the other side, the side coming out of Home Depot, with cars speeding there.
Yeah.
And we, we basically resolved that, but it's, you know, we don't have, we don't, we can't watch it twenty-four seven.
Oh, I know that, I know that. I'm just concerned with the amount of traffic that's gonna be coming down my street, you know, I live on a nice, pretty quiet street. And now, and now all of a sudden, I'm gonna be inundated with traffic, and I'm not gonna be able to get out of the driveway, that's what I'm concerned about. I'm not really happy with that project going through.
I can understand that.
Yeah, and I don't think any of my neighbors are either.
You can understand that too.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, anybody else? Hold on, Tony. Rob, come on down.
Bob Crasquet, Director of Public Works. I just wanted to thank you guys for doing promotions to the gentlemen that are here in the audience tonight. Like I say, they've worked hard, they deserved it, and I firmly believe that this is gonna be really good for future government, moving ahead down the road.
Rob, how many do we have here?
We have Taylor Riley.
Stand, stand up.
And you can notice that.
We wanna thank you, because you make the town beautiful. You really, really do. You guys do a great job, and I can tell you, we get a lot of compliments. And yes, I call Rob and say, hey, this just happened, I just got a complaint, and nine times out of ten, within twelve hours, it's done. Unless it's on a Friday afternoon, and Rob says, Monday morning, we're gonna take care. So I wanna thank you first, you guys do a wonderful job.
These are the guys that go out and take care of the place, they're the ones that actually go out there and do work and make a real town problem.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, appreciate you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay, Tony, Tony, it's been a long night, so.
To get a little longer, Deputy Mayor.
Was that? I was just asking to be nice tonight.
No, fasten your seatbelt. Tony Rizzoli, Sunrise Beach. I have a couple of things that I'm not sure about, I wanna ask questions. Now, we, we can't make it, this project that we're opposed to, but we can't stop, we can't make it an over fifty-five, that's gore, correct?
Well, I mean.
It's up to the developer. Up to the developer.
So the developer can change their mind and make it an over fifty-five.
Yes, he could.
So can we do something to make the developer change his mind? Question. Route 9 is a state road. Lacey Road is a county road. The road that goes into this development is a town road. Who sets the speed limits and weight limits on town roads?
No, we set the speed limits, the weight limits were set by Department of Transit.
Weight limits are also set by us.
So you can set a speed limit and a weight limit for access going into that development, if you choose, yes?
If they're coming off of Railroad Avenue, yes.
Well, the Laurel Boulevard, it's really referring to Laurel Boulevard.
Well, we're all talking about traffic and speed, and we're kids that.
What happens is, an engineer has to perform a study, make a document, traffic code studies, to make a determination as to what the best speed for the.
I'm just asking the question, you can set this, you have the right to set the speed limit and the weight limit for access to that development.
Correct.
And you can set it at five miles an hour and four thousand pounds. How are you gonna move construction and put it on four thousand?
I know, wait, we keep talking about this application, these are questions for the planning board.
I understand that, but it was on my mind is, I was gonna go, but it was canceled. Okay. You don't have the right to set HOA rules on any developments in town. You can make suggestions, but you can't set them.
We don't even make suggestions, I'm saying. The HOA rules have to comply with our regulations, regulations.
Okay.
After that, we don't, we, to be honest, we don't wanna get involved in that.
They have their own courts.
We don't wanna get involved. I don't wanna be talking about what they're doing over there, and she doesn't wanna talk to me about it, I guarantee it.
Okay, that, that's fine, but you do have the right to set rental rules in town, correct?
We had a rental authority, and we do not have a housing authority here in Lacey Township.
Well, if we're gonna have this many developments, maybe down the road, the board, the council might think about changing that and changing our methods of keeping track of the renters in town. Who's renting, where they're renting.
They already do, it's a landlord registration form, and anything over a hundred units goes to the state of New Jersey.
And, and that's up to date? We, we know that every renter is listed.
Okay, so, I cannot force a landlord to rent their property, because we used to be able to do that and charge a fee, you can't do that anymore. So the only time that it comes about is, if there's a code enforcement violation at the property, code enforcement officer usually goes out, they find a violation, he finds out it's a rental property, comes in and checks if there's a landlord disclosure. If there isn't one, he then sends them out a notice to comply.
Okay.
And then if he fails to comply, eventually he summons them out. So we believe that they're up to date as best as possible, but if I don't get a complaint on a property and the tenants keep changing, we don't know if it's up to date.
But we know in advance that these big developments are gonna have renters.
But those big developments will go to the state of New Jersey, not locally, because of the number of units. Like the apartments that, that are over by ShopRite of a Muske, that's all registered with the state of New Jersey, it's not registered with us at all.
And we can't insist that they be registered with us?
No, it's based on the number of units and how the state laws are in.
All right, well, the reason I'm, I'm asking is, if we could, renters are supposed to register with us, or there is a complaint, and our code enforcement officer goes out, we still set the fines, don't we?
Well, the fines are set by the municipal court judge if the landlord fails to register their tenant. Usually they do register, we don't have a problem with that. But it takes weeks, if not months, to get it to the level of the court if somebody fails to register their property.
Well, maybe we should look at raising the fines.
It's up to the municipal court judge, in accordance with statute, to set the fines. There's a sliding scale in the New Jersey statutes to setting fines for that. So it's not up to us locally to do that.
All right, well, that answers those questions. Next question. We talked about the taxes, and that you looked at them, and you got your numbers in, when are the bills going out?
They should be going out the end of July, like they normally are.
Okay, because I have property in other towns, I already got tax bills.
All right, we, we have to wait for the state to certify, and the state is several weeks behind in certifying it. We are in a, a list.
You're in Ocean County, that's.
Yes, we're, yeah.
The other, the other counties, they're done. Okay. I attended a meeting last night about offshore wind, okay, here in town. I had to wait for the Democratic club to be done, which was aggravating, anyway. One of the things that came up was how are the lines gonna be run in from the, from offshore through our town to Polton?
Yeah.
Okay, and then it's gonna be redistributed. And some of the impact that's going to happen to our town with those lines coming through our town, and the possible negative impact of what happens when those lines are run, that being set, is there any way we can look to perhaps talk to our legislators about getting some kind of reimbursement if the lines run through our town?
We're already in talks with that company. We've been in talks with that company for years.
Tony, how did they say the lines were gonna be coming through?
Well, that's, that's still gonna be.
There's three, there's three points.
They haven't figured that out, is this the same argument?
Right.
That thing just got to go on for seven years now.
They were talking about eight foot down, and, you know, if you hit bedrock, you miss dynamite.
You're gonna go under, you're gonna come up from Ware Town up Route 9, which I don't think the state's gonna allow you to do that.
It's gonna be cheaper going through water, they're gonna go up the river.
Or they gotta, or they're gonna come up through the canal, under, under, under Route 9.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
But that's.
You know, I'm waterfront, and I'm wondering, okay, I don't live on the river, but if you hit bedrock eight foot down, seven foot down, you wanna go eight, you're using dynamite to blow up the bedrock because you wanna go down, what happens to our bulkheads? You know, these are the types of things that I'm just concerned about in the future.
I can tell you, in the meetings that I've had, and those Steve's had, or Peter's been with them too, you have not, you haven't been on the board yet, or whatever, these guys are very smart, they've got very, very good engineers, they got a lot of money.
Yeah.
And they're willing, and, and they, they, they plan things to the, and they've been out in the marsh to make sure if they could maybe run it through the marsh out there, they've gone, they're doing their due diligence. When it comes time for this project to finally come to fruition, I'm sure they will be walking through that door, and we will have a meeting, and they're gonna tell us how they're gonna do it, and what way they can do it. We will bring it up, if you're gonna go up through the canal, what about the bulkhead? How's it gonna affect that? But we're nowhere near that part.
Well, the only reason I'm, I'm asking is, the clean, the clean energy fund that everybody pays on their electric bill, part of that money goes to the clean energy fund, and the legislature, and the governor, whether it be Republican, Democrat, or any other political entity that I don't like, but that's beside the point. The fact comes down to, they grab that money. They grab the money and they use it for something else. It doesn't stay in the clean, the clean energy fund. My, my request to you is, take, get some of that money for mitigation issues if they happen in the future, that there's something set aside, you know, that something happens, at least the money that's being paid is gonna be used to rectify whatever went wrong. That's all I'm saying to you.
Let me, let me just answer this thing. I had a bunch, about three weeks ago, we settled in a room. We were talking riding, so he brought up something called the nine-one-one fund, okay, which was to help mitigate costs that we have for our police radians and things like that. And he was telling me what was going on, that they haven't dispersed the money or anything else like that. And I said, you're trying to tell me no shark, young attorney hasn't filed a class action lawsuit, because we all pay it on our, on our, and he said, A, they put, they put wording in there that prevents, and B, there's a loophole, there's wording that they could transfer that money to anywhere in the budget without, without approval. So I'm sure that clean fund that you're talking about got the exact same wording in there.
No difference to the energy tax receipt.
Exactly right, exactly right.
I'm just saying, if there's a way to lock it down for the future renters, I mean, I mean, if, hey, squeaky wheel gets the oil.
Like, like Mr. Connor said, you gotta get the right governor in there. That's the bottom line. They're not gonna change the Assembly or the Senate, but we gotta get the right governor in there.
Oh, no, we can change the Assembly, the Senate, too.
Okay, come on, we've had a long night.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir, come on down. I'll get you one.
Still have to listen to him, even though he's away from me, I still listen to him.
All right, good evening, everybody, thanks for having us. Just wanted to introduce myself, my name's John Rozell, just moved to town. Yeah, we bought our first home January, and we moved in in May, so. Good to be here, thank you. Previously, I was living in Monmouth County, Wall, there's. Excuse me, need your address, sir. Oh, 2134 Brightwood Drive. You know, served, some, did some volunteer work with the town in Wall for eight or nine years, so, very open to once I, you know, learn a little bit more here, if you guys have any openings on any boards or anything, like to.
Set it, set it.
Send it to my email. Okay, great, great.
And we keep it on file, because we do have some openings that, that we'll, which will get super jacked up.
Okay, yeah, I very much like to get involved and continue staying involved, so, that's all. All right, thanks for the meeting.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Young man, come on down here, young man, we missed you the last meeting. We expect you here every minute.
Afternoon, committee members, my name is Dan. I live off of Horrokh Leaf Court in the North Harbor. I just wanted to take this time out of my day to say thank you to each and every one of you up here, for everything that you do for this town, every day during the week, and every month of the year. So, thank you, and whatever you need, anytime, I'm a phone call away, and I'm more than happy to help you with anything.
Dan, let me ask you, what are you doing for the summer?
For the summer, I'm waiting for the next town meeting.
Are you working at all or anything?
I wish I could, I'm thirteen.
He seems so much older for the way he speaks.
He hustles, I was on the phone with him a couple of times, and he hustles, he's cutting grass in his neighborhood.
Yep.
All right, well.
Keep coming, Dan, just keep coming, we appreciate it.
Keep coming, and we appreciate.
And think of the knowledge he's got, too, Deputy Mayor.
So what was the best part about the night's meeting?
Um, hearing everybody's voice in the crowd, and seeing them actually coming out, and as community woman Julia, I would say, that instead of going online and voicing their opinions, they're coming here physically.
Very good.
That's what we want, you're right.
Very good.
That's what we want.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Keep coming back, Dave, I appreciate it.
Is there any other comments from the public?
Just one really quick.
Okay.
I know it's a long night.
It's been a long, and we got another, we got another session to go, so.
Jim, usually, do you know, I just wanted, because we brought up the issue with dogs and ShopRite and stuff, you know, I, every year I deal with, I actually have to call the police, because there's always somebody leaves a, a dog in a car that's a hundred degrees out. In Walmart last year, I actually went into Walmart, I got the plate and everything, first thing I do is always look at my watch to see how long, because the dog's already been in there, and every minute's like an hour in a car. And I, I went into Walmart, and they were like, I was like, here's a plate, can you make an announcement? We're not allowed to do that. I'm like, all right, I guess I have to call the police, but then if the police are busy, like I said.
It's not a priority.
Yes, yeah, well, you know, I, this is where I'm getting into the legality of things. There is a tool that I so happen to carry that, it's, you know, it's made to, I mean, if a dog is in heat stroke, or it, it's in its last minutes, you just press it against